The Honorable Presiding Officer is now in the Session Hall. All rise.
Good morning, everyone. For our invocation, may we have Honorable Pastor Ronaldo Basarte of Lunok Park View Baptist Church.
Let us pray. Our most gracious and loving Father, Nagapasalamat kami amay sang imo nga kaayo sa matag isa namon ka kinabuhay. Salamat O Diyos tungod kay gihatagan usab ni mo kami sa kaadlaw nga puno sang mga pagpakamaayo upod Lord sang amon nga mga public officials O God nga ari sini nga aga nagalantaw O Diyos sang kaayuhan para sa amon nga munisipyo. Nagapray kami Father God nga ikaw Lord among padayon nga magagiyas sa ilah whatever ginoo nga mga butang ng ilah O Diyos nga mahisgutan kag maaprobahan kag paimplementar O Diyos. May pray sang imuhang guidance and divine protection O God sa ilah nga kinabuhay. Pakamayo ha sila amahan hatagi sila kanunay Oga good health nga ginamagamit nila O Diyos samtang sila padayon nga magapag serbisyo sa katauhan Ginoo sa amon nga banwasang Polomolok. Inatugyan amon ning tanan kagsalamat O Diyos sang imuhang nga mga pagpakamaayo kag pagahimuon Lord God sa ilah nga kinabuhay. Kami nga sadiin ikaw O Diyos mong padayon nga maghatag sang mga blessings man O Lord sa ilah nga kinabuhay upod sa bugos nila nga family. Tugyan amon ning tanan ginabalik namon Lord ang mga pagdag pagpasalamat kag pagpasidungog dira say mo sa ngalan samahan sanak sa Diyos Espiritu Santo. Amen.
Thank you very much Pastor Ronaldo Basarte. Please remain standing for the 15th regular session is now called to order. After the Pambansang Awit is the panunumpa ng katapatan sa Watawat by Honorable Billy Bytus and the recitation of the Counselor's Creed is to be led by Honorable Joe R. Falcon.
Mga kababayan ang Pambansang Awit ng Pilipinas. Kayang magiliw, helas ang sirahanan, alam ng puso sa nitikoy buhay. Upang nilira, tuya ka ng magiting, sa manlurupi, tikapasi sigil. San'ya na taputong sa simoyat, sa labi ko po raw. Ayun na tamtulakawin sa pagkayang nilamahar. Ang iskapang kakaawat, huwag na dun, ay naranikinig. Ang pituhin na talo ng akayda, ang haydi ba tipinig. Luwan na paraw ng war, habikwat sigla, huwag na mit sa bibigbo. Aming nikaya na pagkaywa ng api, ang pagkayda ang ga'yo sa'yo. Kami, kami anap na salto't abo, taglayang lisang tugol ang pinipido. Ibat-ibang tibo, pinanggalingan dihan la, sa pataguyan na matibay na mamahayan. Wala buhod, ang sinirin, ang tama na siyang inay. Ang sanway na loya, dihan la, tayo la, parabila na lumay. Sama-sama sa pataguyan na bayan, atin ang putina, magandang ina'pasa. Tayo ay mong kaisa, sa bibigas at ibo, para sa bayan sa'yo. Kayang pangtahanan, ito'y sa umiyaya, itas na mayaman, ng pahinay masagana. Iyak, ugay ang bawa, tumikan na naumpar, sa hilapatin hawa, kami tagapar. Umulok tahanan na kayamanan, lalumpag yamanin, kultura karangalan. Kawak kamay, pagtebayin atin katumpulan, ipagbuhi, disisi ka sa buong sa'yo. Umulok tahanan na manggagawa, umulok tahanan na mangmabayanin. Most na'y katutubo at mga kistyanong, tabi't pisig sa pagmula ng siyang ininiti. Ipagbuhi, bawat ang kahasug, iwalay ba'y ang ino, ang ino ba'y nawakagtao, itumpuhan. Umulok tahanan na kayamanan, lalumpag yamanin, kultura karangalan. Kawak kamay, pagtebayin atin katumpulan, ipagbuhi, disisi ka sa buong sa'yo. Ipagbuhi, disisi ka sa buong sa'yo.
For the recitation of the Counselor's Creed, may we have Honorable Buntuyan since Honorable Falcon is absent.
Honorable Counselors, raise your right hand as we pray for the Counselor's Creed. I am the Deputy Counselor.
Please take your seats. Secretariat, please call the roll.
There are three members absent this morning, Madam Presiding, who are on special leave and they are Counselors, Counselors, Counselor Obisido, no, sorry. Counselor Obisido is on sick leave while Counselor Falcon and Counselor are on special leave.
Since we are still in courtroom, we can proceed to the Order of Business.
For the reading and consideration of our previous minutes, we have the minutes of the 14th regular session held at the Association Hall on October 14, 2025.
Any corrections to the minutes of the previous sessions? If none, the same is approved as presented.
For the first reading and referral of measures or proposed nobody did signify intention to avail of the privileged hour question also will proceed to the first reading and the fellow proposed measures or communications. Number one, we have a letter from our Municipal Mayor dated October 15, 2025 addressed to the honorable members of the Sangguyang Bayan through Honorable Florist Bonzuelo Carlos. Municipal Vice Mayor, the Presiding Officer, dear ladies and gentlemen, greetings. This is reference to Resolution Number 234 Series of 2025 dated September 9, 2025 entitled "A Resolution Authorizing the Municipal Government of Polomolok to Open an Account in We Access Facility with Land Bank of the Philippines and Designating Authorized Signatories to Sign, Execute, and Deliver any and all documents in connection thereto." As per above resolution, respectfully requesting the August Members of the Sangguyang Bayan for the urgent passage of a resolution amending Table 1 as to the names of the newly or new authorized signatories as follows. And they are Honorable Bernie De Palencia Mayor, Authorizer. Mariel Giantin May F. Bautista, Acting Municipal Treasurer, Authorizer. Unice A. Bayan, Municipal Accountant, Maker. And Berlin N. Lugon, Accounting Clerk 2, or Queenie Jane E., Superior Administrative Aid 1, as Maker. Thank you and warm regards sincerely signed Honorable Bernie De Palencia, our Municipal Mayor.
This is urgent.
Number two. It's also a letter from our Municipal Mayor on the same date addressed to this August body through the Honorable Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer. Dear ladies and gentlemen, greetings. Respectfully requesting the August Members of the Sangguyang Bayan for the passage of a resolution authorizing our local chief executive to sign the deed of donation over portions of a parcel of land containing an area of 52,633 square meters covered by OCT. Number P-31635, Lot 122, PT, PLS 209-D, D-28 located in Puruk Luna, Barangay Silroy 8, this municipality and owned by heirs of Perfecto Luna represented by the attorney in fact, Rolando Luna. Please attach pertinent documents. Thank you and warm regards. Signed by our Municipal Mayor.
Committees on Land Use and Rules, the Lead Committee, Land Use.
And also a letter from our Municipal Mayor addressed to this August body. Through the Honorable Presiding Officer, gentlemen and ladies, I am forwarding to that level 13 sets of proposed fiscal year 2026 general fund and economic enterprise annual budget of our municipality. The set budget allocation is in line with approved fiscal year 2026 annual investment program or AIP and the revised chart of accounts for LGUs by the Commission and Audit. With this, the undersigned respectfully requests the Honorable Members of the Sangguyang Bayan to review the proposed budget. If the manner of appropriation is found to be reasonable and within the bounds of the authority granted to the undersigned, may request that a resolution and appropriation ordinance be passed approving the fiscal year 2026 executive budget. Very thoroughly signed by our Municipal Mayor.
Committees on Finance and Rules, Lead Committee, Finance.
And next is also is a communication from our acting MDR RMO addressed to the Honorable Members dated October 14, 2025 to the Honorable Members of the Sangguyang Bayan. This letter serves to formally request a correction to the reported total for the 2025 trust fund as presented during the third quarter MDR MC meeting held on August 7, 2025. During the meeting, the total amount for the proposed projects, programs, and activities or PPAs was incorrectly stated as 8,575,066 centavos. The correct amount as detailed in the presentation is 8,120,575 pesos and point and 66 centavos. The correct breakdown of the proposed PPAs is as follows. Rehabilitation of flood control structures, 4 million. Rehabilitation of farm-to-market roads and waterways, 1.5 million. Purchase of speed gun, 2.5 million. Gender sensitivity DRR or CCA trainings, 120,575 pesos and 66 centavos. Corrected total, 8,120,575 pesos and 66 centavos. We apologize for any confusion. This may have a cost. We kindly request that you update that you update your records to reflect the correct corrected total of 8,120,575.66 for the 2025 trust fund. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Signed, Engineer Jonathan Di Fabulare, Acting MDR RMO.
This is urgent.
And number 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 8. This is these are six measures legislative measures of barangay population. No, except first is coronal proper and the rest is of barangay population. And barangay lumakil is barangay ordinance number one, Series of 2024 of barangay coronal proper entitled "An Ordinance Inacting the Revised barangay Tax Code of barangay Coronal Proper, Polomolok, South Cotabato."
We go to Committee on Finance and Committee on Rules, the finances, the Lead Committee.
And on barangay population is barangay ordinance number seven, Series of 2025 entitled "An Ordinance Prohibiting littering, dumping, throwing of garbage, rubbish, or any kind of waste in public and private places of barangay population, Polomolok, South Cotabato."
Envoy and Rules, Lead Committee, Environment.
And still on barangay population is barangay ordinance number eight, Series of 2025 entitled "An Ordinance Providing for the Control and Elimination of Human and Animal Rubbish of barangay population, Polomolok, South Cotabato" prescribing penalties for violation and appropriating funds thereof.
Health and Rules, Lead Committee, Health.
And still on barangay population, barangay ordinance number nine, Series of 2025 entitled "An Ordinance Requiring All Households in barangay population to comply zero openification or ZOD providing for its guidelines and penalties for violation and appropriating funds thereof."
Health and Rules, Lead Committee, Health.
And still on barangay population is barangay ordinance number 10, Series of 2025 entitled "An Ordinance Institutionalizing the barangay kalikasan code of population" up institutionalizing the barangay kalinisian code of population, Polomolok, South Cotabato.
Committees on Environment and Rules, Lead Committee, Environment.
And lastly, still on barangay population is barangay ordinance number 11, Series of 2025 entitled "An Ordinance Mandating the Installation of CCTV Cameras in All Business Establishments in barangay population, Polomolok, South Cotabato for the Purpose of Public Safety, Crime Prevention, the Promotion of Peace and Order" and penalty for noncompliance thereof.
Committees on Communication and Information and Rules, Lead Committee, Communication.
And number nine is application for accreditation of the following non-governmental organizations. Dolphil Agrarian Reform Beneficialist Cooperative or DARBC. Philippine-Wide Anti Smoking for Health or POASO. Polomolok Growers Association, Save the Children, Strong Thread Association, and barangay sulit kalipi association.
We'll go to the committee on co-ops.
And lastly, we have a copy of Trial Balance of Trust Fund as of August 31, 2025 and Special Education Fund as of September 30, 2025.
Just an info.
And for the committee reports, this morning we have seven, seven reports calendared. First of which is the ninth joint committee report, Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriations and Committee on barangay affairs. Subject calendar year 2025, general fund supplemental budget number one, barangay sulit. And then 10th joint report also coming from the same committees. Subject fiscal year 2025 general fund annual budget of barangay pagalungan. And the number three is fifth joint committee report of the Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriations and Committee on Youth and Sports Development. Subject calendar year 2025 SK annual budget of barangay Bintong, of barangay Bintong.
Honorable Haverro.
Thank you, Madam Presiding. First is the joint committee report from the Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriation and Committee on barangay affairs. The subject of which is the calendar year 2025 supplemental budget number one of barangay sulit. Facts and findings, the above measure was referred to the hearing committee for review and proper action on October 7, 2025. The joint committee held a meeting on October 15, 2025 at 9:30 in the morning at the Association Hall. Is be building this municipality for the consideration of the above mentioned measure and was attended by the joint committee members and barangay official, barangay sulit this municipality. Upon deliberation, the joint committee found the following facts. The barangay concerned has an annual budget amounting to 414,173 pesos and 47 centavos which was sourced from sources of fund, fund actually available, current surplus and appropriated and the amount of 213,698 and 7 centavos. And saving from continuing appropriation at 20% development fund 2024 200,475 pesos and 40 centavos for a total funding source of 414,173 pesos and 47 centavos. The aforementioned budget was appropriated as follows. Object of expenditure, general administration program, training expenses 50,000. Electricity expenses 93,698 pesos and 7 centavos. 20% development plan, publication of concrete katahome sulit 100,000. Signage in front of public market and completion of blind canal at Puruk 3. barangay sulit 100,475 pesos and 40 centavos. And program, project, and activities, culture, arts, and development program in the amount of 40,000 pesos. Health and nutrition program. barangay council for the protection of children, 20,000. And the health and nutrition program at 10,000. Vice versa. Health and nutrition program in the amount of 20,000. barangay council for the protection of children, 10,000 for a total of 414,173 pesos and 47 centavos. As explained by the barangay council, the budget was made in order to fund projects that are relevant to the community. The supplemental annual investment program budget is the same to the proposed supplemental budget amounting to 414,173 pesos and 47 centavos. Honorable Octavio and Honorable Obisido emphasize to ask assistance from the DSWMSWDO with regards to the program involving children in line with the VCPC program. The joint committee found that the proposed supplemental budget is improper hence the same was moved for its approval. Recommendation with the foregoing consideration, the committee hereby recommends the following. To adopt this joint committee report, to pass a resolution approving the calendar year 2025 supplemental budget number one of barangay sulit amounting to 414,173 pesos and 47 centavos and to take this as urgent into decision. Reported by your story. As Chairman of the Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriation, concord by Honorable GCG Buntuyan, Honorable Calixto Bisolada, Honorable Antonio Biokta. Honorable Jerome Y. Ante, Honorable Ligaya R. Obisido, Honorable Billy Bert Bytus. So I move for the adoption of the committee report, Madam Presiding.
The same is approved.
So next. Ah, committee report from the same committee. The subject of which is the fiscal year 2025 general fund annual budget of barangay pagalungan, Polomolok, South Cotabato. Facts and findings, the above measure was referred to the hearing committee for review and proper action on August 5, 2025. The joint committee held a meeting on October 15, 2025 at 10:30 in the morning at the Association Hall. Is be building this municipality for the consideration of the above mentioned measure and was attended by the joint committee members and barangay officials of barangay pagalungan this municipality. Upon deliberation, the joint committee found the following facts. The barangay concerned has an annual budget amounting to 4 million which was sourced from share on real property tax in the amount of 730,000. Business tax, stores and retailers 50,000. Other taxes, community taxes 50,000. Clearance and certification fees 50,000. Rent income 120,000. Subsidy from LGU, municipal aid 1 million, provincial aid 2 million with a total of 4 million pesos. The aforementioned budget was appropriated as follows. Object of expenditure, personal services 1,570,400 pesos. MOE 2,425,600 pesos for a total of 4 million pesos. As explained by the barangay official, the budget was made in order to fund the projects that are relevant to the community. The implementation of escape project, the 10% amounting to 400,000 and the calamity fund, the 5% amounting to 200,000 form part of the MOE. The annual investment program budget is the same to the proposed barangay annual budget amounting to 4 million pesos. The joint committee members did not approve the proposed increase of wages honorary of the barangay official as well as the terminal leave benefits amounting to 135,000 pesos because they have they already reached the 55% limitation on personal services as stated in its local budget circular number 63. as stated in its local budget circular number 63 and 160 of the Department of Budget and Management, dated October 22, 1996, and annual and August 12, 2024, that the compensation of barangay official and personnel shall conform with this provision. Respectively, disbursement of funds for the leave benefits of the barangay official shall be in accordance to Joint Circular Number One Series of 2004 of the Civil Service Commission and the Department of Budget and Management. The barangay official were advised to submit the corrected copy of their annual budgets with which they complied. Despite the observation, the joint committee found that the proposed budget is improper, hence the same was moved for its approval. Recommendation, with the foregoing consideration, the committee hereby recommends the following: to adopt this joint committee report, to pass a resolution approving the fiscal year 2025, General Fund Annual Budget of Barangay Pagalungan, Polomolok South Cotabato, amounting to 4 million pesos. To sign the copy of the resolution approving the fiscal year 2025, General Fund Annual Budget of Barangay Pagalungan to the Commission on Audit, Municipal Accounting on the Concerned Barangay, and to take this as urgent into decision.
The same is approved. Next.
Fifth La Fos Digamo, Kurodad Flanuk. I take the floor today to present the fifth joint committee report of the Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriations, Committee on Youth and Sports Development. The matter under consideration is the calendar year 2025, Sangunyang Kabataan Annual Budget of Barangay Bintong. Upon thorough review and evaluation, the committee has determined the following key points: the above subject matter was referred to the to the herein undersigned joint committee for the review and proper action on October 7, 2025, during the 14th regular session of the 20th Sangunyang Bayan. The joint committee held a meeting on October 14, 2025, at 10:30 a.m. at the Session Hall of the Sangunyang Bayan Building to discuss the budget. Present or present at the meeting were the committee members along with the SK officials of Barangay Bintong. Under Section 20B of the IRR of RA Number 10742, the Sangunyang Kabataan has financial independence in its operations, disbursements, and encashment of its funds, income, and expenditures. As such, the Sangunyang Kabataan funds shall be deposited in the name of the Sangunyang Kabataan of the concerned barangay in a government-owned bank situated in or nearest to its area of jurisdiction with the Sangunyang Kabataan Chairperson and the Sangunyang Kabataan Treasurer as the official signatories. 10% of the general fund of the barangay shall be set aside for the SK, which shall be disbursed solely by the SK for youth development and empowerment purposes. Upon deliberation, the joint committee found the following facts: that the barangay concerned has an annual budget of 3,000 or 379,717 pesos and 90 centavos, which was sourced from the 10% SK share of the barangays 2025 General Fund. The aforementioned budget was appropriated as follows: general administration program, 124,500; capability building, which emphasizes leadership training, 70,000; health and sports development, 119,117 pesos and 90 centavos; equitable access to quality education, 26,100; youth employment and livelihood, 5,000; general sensitivity, 5,000; anti-drug abuse, 5,000; agriculture, 5,000; environment protection, climate change and mitigation, disaster risk reduction, resiliency, 20,000; for the total expenditure program amounting to 379,717 pesos and 90 centavos. The council urged the Sangunyang Kabataan to prioritize the early preparation and submission of their annual budget, ideally before October, to ensure the timely implementation of youth programs and projects. The SK is also encouraged to coordinate regularly with the barangay treasurer, the Commission on Audit, and the Association of barangay captains for guidance and resolution of pending financial matters, including issues related to unclaimed honoraria. The committee recommends the formulation of a local ordinance to formally establish the academic incentive program, ensuring a clear legal basis and standardized framework for its implementation. The maintain, to maintain fiscal sustainability, it was also suggested the specific qualifications and guidelines to be clearly defined to prevent potential budget deficits in the event of a large number of eligible beneficiaries. The committee advises the Sangunyang Kabataan to pursue partnerships with key institutions such as Department of Agriculture, the Office of the Municipal Agriculturist, the Mahintana Foundation, and the local police units to obtain technical support, free seeds, and agricultural materials. The council also emphasized the importance of minimizing expenditures by sourcing tools and materials at no cost through these partnerships. The council also strongly recommends that HIV AIDS and Teen Age Pregnancy Prevention Seminars be prioritized with a focus on active youth engagement, education, and effective prevention strategies, given that Polomolok ranked second in South Cotabato for HIV cases and continues to experience high teenage pregnancy rates. The SK is urged to address these issues through interactive, youth-friendly forums that encourages awareness and responsible behavior. Also, the SK is encouraged to begin preparations for the 2026 annual budget as early as October to December 2025 to ensure timely and efficient planning. It was also advised that SK officials, not just the SK or the chairpersons themselves, actively participate in the budget consultations, program planning, and coordination meetings with the barangay to promote transparency, foster collaboration, and encourage a sense of shared responsibility in program implementation. We also recommend with the foregoing considerations, and there have been no more discussions and/or objections thereto, the joint committee agreed to recommend the following: to adopt this report, to pass a resolution approving the calendar year 2025, Sangunyang Kabataan Annual Budget of the barangay Bintong, and to consider the said resolution as one of the urgent matters or urgent measures in today's session, prepared by Honorable Illyzar Hobero, the Chairperson of the Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriations, concurred by the Chairperson on the Committee on Youth and Sports Development, SKMF Angelique Dave Costas, together with Councillors Calixto Salada, Ligaya Orbisido, Joar Falcon, Jerome Ante, Billy Bert Baitus Jr., and Councillor Dave Amor.
The same is approved. Next.
Number four is the first joint report of the Committee on Health Nutrition and Sanitation and Committee on Rules Good Governance and Oversight, subject: Communication from our municipal mayor dated September 2, 2025, requesting this August body for favorable review and approval of the request for legislative authority of our municipal mayor to enter into a signed memorandum of understanding with the Heramil Hospital through the Bagong Polomolok Municipal Health Office, primary care facility for the implementation of the breastfeeding program.
Honorable Salada.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. Good morning, everyone. First, joint committee report, October 21, 2025, from the Committee on Health Nutrition and Sanitation and Committee on Rules Good Government and Oversight, subject as mentioned by the secretary. Facts and findings, number one: on October 7, 2025, during its 13th regular session, the Sangunyang Bayan referred the above mentioned communication to the Committee on Health Nutrition and Sanitation and Committee on Rules Good Government and Oversight for appropriate action. Number two, on October 9, 2025, the joint committee convened its meeting at the Sangunyang Bayan Session Hall, present where the committee chairpersons, vice-chairpersons, and members. Also in attendance was Mil BT Salaan, representative of Heramil Hospital. Ma'am Salaan informed the body that Heramil Hospital, a certified mother-baby friendly facility, is undergoing accreditation renewal, requiring submission of materials such as delivery videos, breastfeeding posters, and staff and security guards' training records, following a Department of Health assessment with recommendations for compliance improvement. The representative also clarified that the hospital has been implementing the program since the term of Dr. Dipos, a former municipal health officer, and the present memorandum of understanding renewal aims to continue and strengthen the program's implementation in partnership with the Bagong Polomolok Municipal Health Office Primary Care Facility. Number five, it was noted that despite an almost 30% decrease in delivery rates since the establishment of the Polomolok General Hospital, both Heramil Hospital and PGI maintain a collaborative partnership, referring patients to one another depending on service availability. Number six, the committee members recognize this partnership as a positive and coordinated effort that ensures accessible and quality maternal and child health services for the people of Polomolok. Ma'am Salaan explained that although the memorandum of understanding is renewed annually, it was put on hold during the pandemic. This renewal marks the first time it is being formally endorsed to the Sangunyang Bayan for the mayor signing authority, as previous renewals were directly managed only by the Municipal Health Office. The following documents were reviewed and served as basis for deliberation, communication from the Office of the Municipal Mayor dated October 2, 2025, requesting legislative authority to enter into a MOU with Heramil Hospital, draft memorandum of understanding between the Municipal Polomolok and Heramil Hospital. Considering the memorandum of understanding renewal between Heramil Hospital and the Bagong Polomolok Municipal Health Office Primary Care Facility serves the best interest of the constituents by ensuring continued quality maternal and child health services under the Mother-Baby Friendly Facility Program, and that all documents are proper and in order, the committee recommends granting the municipal mayor authority to sign the memorandum of agreement, understanding. Correction. Recommendations: to adopt this committee report, to pass a resolution to rising municipal mayor Honorable Bernie D. Palencia to enter into and sign for, and in behalf of the municipality Polomolok, a memorandum of understanding with Heramil Hospital through the Bagong Polomolok Municipal Health Office Primary Care Facility for the implementation of breastfeeding program. Number three, to consider this matter as one of the urgent measures on today's session, reported by yours truly, concord by the Honorable Ligaya R. Obisido, Honorable Illyzar G. Hobero, Honorable Jerome Y. Ante, Honorable Antonio B. Octavio, Honorable Billy Bert C. Baitus Jr., Honorable Angelique Dave Costas. So I move, Madam Presiding.
Said report is approved.
The number five is the first committee report of the committee on Environmental Protection Natural Resources Ecological and Solid Waste Management and Disaster Risk Reduction and Climate Change. Subject barangay ordinance number two, series of 2025, of barangay palkan entitled an ordinance, Organizing Task Force Kalinisan at Kaayusan of the barangay palkan as a regular team in implementing the DILG Memo Circular Number 2023-133, or the bar kada, a weekly cleanup drive and circular number 2024-053, barangay road clearing operation, or barco, and imposing penalties thereof.
First committee report, October 21, 2025, from the Committee on Environmental Protection Natural Resources Ecological and Solid Waste Management, Disaster Risk Reduction, Climate Change. Facts and findings, the 28th Sangunyang Bayan in its eighth regular session referred the above stated measure to the committee on August 26, 2025 for appropriate action. On October 1, 2025, the committee convened to deliberate the matter. The meeting was attended by the committee chairperson, vice-chairperson members, and representatives of barangay council of palkan, particularly Honorable Analisa Akas, Honorable Micheloan Golfan, both serving as barangay kagawads. Number three, the committee noted that the ordinance unfairly targets barangay officials and task force members with penalties, while excluding private residents and businesses who also contribute to the environmental issues. This creates an imbalance as those responsible for maintaining cleanliness are penalized while others remain unaccountable. The committee advised revising the ordinance title, noting that it is overly long and includes details better suited for the whereas enclosed. A clearer title would be creating the Task Force Kalinisan at Kaayusan of barangay palkan, Polomolok South Cotabato, and imposing penalties thereof, with creating preferred over organizing to reflect formal establishment. Number five, the committee also questioned the reasoning behind imposition of penalties. As explained by the proponent barangay kagawad, the ordinance was introduced in response to poor attendance during weekly cleanup drives, which are mandated under a DILG memorandum. Nevertheless, the committee instead suggested using incentives like pre-week pass or refreshments to encourage participation rather than punishing officials. Number six, the committee agreed that the ordinance has a good goal of keeping the environment clean, but it needs improvement. People who break rules such as improper waste disposal or blocking roads should be the ones to receive penalties. Barangay officials and task force members should be governed by internal agreements, not punished through the ordinance. Number seven, in light of the committee's determination that the proposed ordinance imposes penalties on barangay officials without extending accountability to private individuals and establishments, and that such provisions may conflict with administrative and legal standards, the committee finds sufficient basis to disapprove the proposed ordinance. Recommendations: to adopt this committee report, to pass a resolution disapproving barangay ordinance number two, series of 2025 of barangay palkan entitled an ordinance organizing the Task Force Kalinisan at Kaayusan of the barangay palkan as a regular team in implementing the DILG memorandum circular number 2023-133, a weekly cleanup drive and circular number 2024-053, barangay road clearing operation, and imposing penalties thereof. To consider this matter as one of the urgent measures on today's session, reported by yours truly, concord by Honorable Billy Bert Baitus Jr., Honorable Ligaya R. Obisido, Honorable Jerome Y. Ante, and Honorable Illyzar G. Hobero. Thank you, Madam Presiding.
The same is approved. Next.
Number six is a joint report from the committee on Housing and Land Utilization, Zoning, Urban Planning, Public Works and Utilities and Committee on Environmental Protection Natural Resources Ecological and Solid Waste Management and Disaster Risk Reduction and Climate Change, subject: Communication from our municipal mayor dated September 9, 2025, requesting the this August body for a resolution authorizing our local chief executive to process and apply for a special patent on lot number A2825-B located at barangay Magsay Side, this municipality, uncovered by tax declaration number N-1302818, containing an area of 9,480 square meters, more or less, before the community Environment and Natural Resources Office are central, and to request, submit, or sign any and all pertinent documents thereto. And lastly, the seventh joint report, also coming from the same committee, in association with or in coordination with the Committee on Rules Good Government and Oversight, subject: Communication from the Office of the Municipal Mayor dated September 8, 2025, requesting this August body for the purchase for an authority for the purchase of 10,000 square meter portion of lot number four, plan number PSD-12069393, covered by TCT number 145-20150255, located at barangay palkan, this municipality in the amount of 1.5 million as relocation site for families residing in high-risk and landslide-prone areas. as relocation site for families residing in high-risk and landslide-prone areas.
Thank you, Madam Presiding. Peace and blessings. May angung sa tanan. First, joint committee report, 21st of October 2025, from and subject already mentioned by the secretary. Facts and findings. Number one, on September 16, 2025, during its 11th regular session, the 28th Sangguyang Bayan of Pulumulok referred the above-mentioned communication to here and committees for appropriate action. Number two, a joint committee meeting was convened on October 9, 2025 at the Sangguyang Bayan Session Hall to deliberate on the merits of the proposed measure. The meeting was attended by the respective committee chairpersons, vice-chairpersons and members. Also in attendance were Junmar B. Cambarihan from the Municipal Planning and Development Office, MPDO, and Ms. Karen K. C. Alba from the Municipal Assessors Office, or MAO. Number three, Ms. Karen K. C. Alba, Municipal Assessor, provided technical assistance and relevant information to support the request, confirming the subject property is declared in the name of Municipality of Pulumulok and classified as government land, hence tax exempt. Number four, based on the attached supporting documents, including the tax declaration of real property, of real property, TDARP number N-1302818, and after detailed discussion and review, the committee found that the request necessary and beneficial to the Municipality of Pulumulok as it ensures the legal ownership and documentation of government property currently being utilized for essential public services. Number five, it was also noted that the subject property serves as the permanent site of the PNP Municipal Police Station, the BGMP Pulumulok, and the Motor Pool Engineering Department, underscoring the urgency of securing the special patent to legitimize the government, its government use. Recommendations? In view for the foregoing, the committee respectfully recommends to adopt this committee report and to pass a resolution authorizing the Municipal Mayor Honorable Bernie D. Palencia to process and apply for a special patent on lot number 8025-B located at barangay Magsayisay this municipality, uncovered by tax declaration number N-1302818, containing an area of 9,480 square meters more or less before the Community Environment and Natural Resources Office, or Senro, and to request, submit, and/or sign any and all pertinent documents related thereto. To consider this matter as one of the urgent measures on today's session. Reported by yours truly, Honorable Billy Bert C. Bytos Jr., concorded by Honorable Callexto B. Salada, MD, Honorable Illyzar G. Hubero, signed also by Honorable Jerome Y. Ante, Honorable J. R. H. Falcon, Honorable Ligaya R. Albizido. Madam Presiding, I move for the adoption of this committee report as presented. Thank you.
The same is approved.
Once again, thank you, Madam Presiding. Peace and blessings. May angung sa tanan. Seventh joint committee report, 21st of October 2025, from and subject already mentioned by the secretary. Facts and findings. Number one, on September 16, 2025, during its 11th regular session, the 28th Sangguyang Bayan of Pulumulok referred the above-stated communication to the concerned committees for appropriate action. Number two, on September 17, 2025, a joint committee meeting was conducted at the Sangguyang Bayan Session Hall, attended by the chairpersons, vice-chairpersons and members of the concerned committees, together with Engineer Dominador C. Kamiki Jr., Officer in Charge Municipal Planning and Development Office, or MPDO. Number three, after a detailed review of the submitted documents and careful deliberation during the committee meeting, the committee finds that, A, the subject property located at barangay palcan Pulumulok South Cotabato is suitable for use as relocation site being accessible through existing barangay roads and situated within a safe and developable area. B, the ownership of the property is clearly established through a registered deed of absolute sale, and the current owner, Mr. Arbin L. Abugadil, has full legal authority to dispose of a portion of the said property. C, the Provincial Appraisal Committee of South Cotabato, after conducting an ocular inspection and valuation, has fixed the fair market value at 1,500,000 pesos per hectare, which is reasonable and consistent with the prevailing rate in the locality. D, the proposed purchase of the property will facilitate the establishment of a relocation site for families residing in high-risk and landslide-prone areas within the municipality, consistent with the LGU's relocation and land acquisition program. E, all submitted documents and supporting certifications were found to be complete and compliant with the requirements of Commission on Audit, QUa, circular number 89-296, and the Department of Interior and Local Government, or DILG, memorandum circulars governing the acquisition of real property for public use. Recommendations? In the view of the foregoing, the committee recommends the approval of the request of Honorable Bernie D. Palencia, Municipal Mayor, for the passage of a resolution to adopt this committee report and to pass the following resolutions. A resolution authorizing the Honorable Mayor, Honorable Bernie D. Palencia, to purchase of the 10,000 square meters, a portion of lot, lot four, PSD-12-069393, covered by TCT number 145-2015002555, located in barangay palcan Pulumulok South Cotabato, in the amount of 1,500,000 pesos only, as relocation site for families residing in high-risk and landslide-prone areas. To consider this matter as one of the urgent measures of today's session. Reported by yours truly, Honorable Billy Bert C. Bytos Jr., concorded by Honorable Callexto B. Salada, MD, Honorable Illyzar G. Hubero, signed also by Honorable Jerome Y. Ante, Honorable J. R. H. Falcon, Honorable Ligaya R. Albizido. Madam Presiding Officer, I move for the adoption of this committee report as presented. Thank you.
And let's start the motion for interpolation. The same is approved. Let's proceed.
For the calendar of business. At finished business, we have none. Business for today, second reading for our urgent matters. We have nine measures considered urgent. First of which is the letter from our Municipal Mayor dated October 15, 2025, requesting this August body to amend resolution number 234, series of 2025, a resolution authorizing the municipal government of Pulumulok to open an account in the We Access Facility with Land Bank of the Philippines and designating authorized signatories to sign, execute, and deliver any and all documents in connection therewith by designating and authorizing the new signatories as follows. Honorable Bernie D. Palencia, Municipal Mayor, as the authorizer. Meriel Justin May F. Batista, Acting Municipal Treasurer, authorizer. Yunis A. Bayan, Municipal Accountant, maker. Berlin N. Logun, Accounting Clerk II, or Queenie Jane E. Superior, Administrative Aid I, as maker.
May we have the Chair of the Committee on Finance?
Okay, thank you, Madam Presiding.
Madam Presiding, I think before we proceed with the measure, I think it's better for us to repeal the previous resolution and come up to pave the way for the adoption of another resolution, so that this authority will just be contained in a single document rather than more than one document, because it will create some kind of confusion. So we will just state in the resolution, this resolution expressly repeals resolution number 256. Uh...
No, 234.
Ah, 234, sorry. This is a different resolution. 234, series of 2025.
Okay, Honorable Laverro.
Okay, so thank you, Madam Presiding. As what explained by the secretary. Uh, first, we have to repeal uh, resolution number 234 to confirm with our records, and then to pass a new resolution authorizing the Municipal Government of Pulumulok. So with this, Madam Presiding, I move uh, to pass a resolution to repeal uh, resolution number 234, series of 2025, and to pass a resolution authorizing the Municipal Government of Pulumulok to open an account in the We Access Facility with Land Bank of the Philippines and designating authorized signatories to sign, execute, and deliver any and all documents in connection therewith by designating the authorizing new signatories as follows. Uh, first, uh, Honorable Bernie D. Palencia, our Municipal Mayor, as authorizer, with the amount range no limit. Then, Meriel Justin May F. Batista, CPA, Acting Municipal Treasurer, as authorizer, amount range no limit. And third, Yunis A. Bayan, CPA, Municipal Accountant, as maker. Uh... Then, uh, Berlin N. Logun, Accounting Clerk II, or Queenie Jane Superior, Administrative Aid I, as maker. And so I move, Madam Presiding.
Before the approval, let's take a five-minute recess.
I will just...
Any second to the motion. It has been moved and seconded. The same is approved, and please, Secretaria, take note of the salient points.
Okay, to state it again, Madam Presiding. We will only adapt one resolution, and the repealing clause will just be stated in the resolved portion of the new resolution, so that there's only one resolution that was adapted. Okay, to proceed. The second urgent is also a communication, no, it's the communication from our acting MDRMO. And this is request for correction. Uh... To correct the figure from 8,575,000 pesos and 66 centavos to 8,120,575.66 centavos. And this resolution, the 1, 8,575,000 pesos and 66 centavos was contained in resolution number 256, which was adapted during the 13th regular session last October 7, 2025, Madam Presiding. October 7, 2025.
Correcting the amount, or a new resolution for that matter?
The same, I think that's...
The same?
The same resolution, we will make another resolution, and then the the repealing clause will again be stated in the resolved portion, Madam Presiding. So that another resolution will come out, will come up, and we will set aside the old resolution.
Okay, so Honorable Laverro.
Thank you again, Madam Presiding. So, with the request of the, uh, acting MDRMO for the information of everybody, the first communication that this forwarded us is what the stated amount. That's why the resolution that we approved and passed, uh, we, uh, we put up this amount. So with this time, in this time, uh, with the request again of the MDRMO, uh, acting MDRMO, Engineer Jonathan Pabulari, we will, uh, pass a resolution to to put the exact amount that was detailed under our request. So, Madam Presiding, I move now to pass a resolution, uh... approving the request of the, uh, acting MDRMO to repeal uh, the previous resolution and putting the exact amount that the request in the amount of uh, 8,120,575 pesos and 66 centavos.
It has been moved and any second? The same is seconded, provided, Secretaria, please take note of the resolved portion as to the repealing clause of the previous resolution to that effect.
The same pattern, Madam Presiding, as what we had agreed, what has been approved a while ago. The same procedure or the same pattern will follow.
Let's proceed.
For the third urgent, we have the calendar year 2025 General Fund Supplemental Budget Number One of barangay sulit, and then followed by calendar year of fiscal year 2025 General Fund Annual Budget of barangay pagalungan, and calendar year 2025 SK Annual Budget of barangay bintong.
Honorable Laverro is recognized.
Uh, thank you again, Madam Presiding. So for the first two resolution, Madam Presiding, uh, in omnibus motion, I move to pass a resolution approving the General Fund of barangay pagalungan in the amount of 4 million and supplemental budget of barangay sulit in the amount of 414,173 pesos and 40 cents in tabos, as embodied in its appropriation ordinance.
The two resolutions have been moved and seconded, the same are approved. Next.
Madam Chair, I respectfully move for the approval of this resolution approving the calendar year 2025 of the Sangguyang Kabataan Annual Budget of barangay bintong Pulumulok South Cotabato amounting to 379,717 pesos and 90 centavos.
It has been moved and seconded, the same is approved unless there's an objection. Next.
Next is the request of our Municipal Mayor for legislative authority to enter into and sign a memorandum of understanding with Hiramil Hospital through the Bagong Pulumulok Municipal Health Office Primary Care Facility for the implementation of the breastfeeding program.
Honorable Salada is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Presiding. I move to pass a resolution authorizing Municipal Mayor Honorable Bernie D. Palencia to enter into and sign for and in behalf of the Municipality of Pulumulok a memorandum of understanding MOU with Hiramil Hospital through the Bagong Pulumulok Municipal Health Office Primary Care Facility for the implementation of the breastfeeding program.
It's been moved and seconded, the same is approved.
Next is barangay ordinance number two, series of 2025, of barangay palcan, entitled an ordinance organizing the task force kalinisan at kaayusan of the barangay palcan as a regular team in implementing the DILG Memo Circular Number 2023-133 or the barcada, a weekly cleanup drive and circular number 2024-053 the barangay road clear operation or barco, and imposing penalties thereof.
I move to pass a resolution disapproving barangay ordinance number two, series of 2025 of barangay palcan Pulumulok South Cotabato, entitled an ordinance organizing the task force kalinisan at kaayusan of the barangay palcan as a regular team in implementing the DILG memorandum circular number barcada 2023-133.
the DILG memorandum circular number barkada, 2023-133, a weekly cleanup drive, and circular number 2024-053 barangay road clearing operation, barco, and imposing penalties thereof.
It has been moved and seconded, the same is approved. Next.
The last two urgents are: The request of our municipal mayor for an authority to process and apply for a special patent on lot number A2825-B located at barangay Magsayisay, this municipality, and covered by tax declaration number N-1302818, containing an area of 9,480 square meters, more or less, before the senro, and to request, submit, and/or sign any and all pertinent documents related thereto. And also a letter from our municipal mayor for Sangguyang Bayan Authority to purchase the 10,000 square meter portion of lot number four, plan number PSD-12-069393, covered by TCT number 145-201500255, located barangay palcan, this municipality, in the amount of 1,500,000 pesos, or 1.5 million, as relocation site for families residing in high-risk and landslide-prone areas.
Thank you, Madam Presiding. I move now to pass a resolution authorizing the municipal mayor, Honorable Bernie D. Palencia, to process and apply for a special patent on lot number A2825-B located at barangay Magsayisay, municipality of Pulumulok, province of South Cotabato, covered by tax declaration number N-1302818, containing an area of 9,480 square meters, more or less, before the community environment and natural resources office, or senro, and to request, submit, and/or sign any and all pertinent documents related thereto. So I respectfully move, Madam Presiding.
It has been moved and seconded, the same is approved.
Once again, thank you, Madam Presiding. I move now to pass a resolution authorizing the Honorable Municipal Mayor, Honorable Bernie D. Palencia, to purchase a 10,000 square meter portion of lot number, plan number PSD-12-069393, covered by transfer certificate of title number 145-201500255, located in barangay palcan, municipality of Pulumulok South, Cotabato, in the amount of 1,500,000 pesos to be utilized as relocation site for the families residing in high-risk and landslide-prone areas. So I respectfully move, Madam Presiding.
It has been moved and seconded by Honorebals Amor Hobero, Octavio, and Salada, the same is approved. Next.
For the scheduled second reading, we have none. For the third and final reading, none. For the unassigned business, none. Let's go now to the announcement.
For the Committee on Health, Thursday and Friday, please subblock your calendar, no, for the codification, and then... Ah, yes, Honorable Salada.
Committee meeting also on Wednesday, Committee on Health, Roles, and Envoy.
Any more announcements? If none, let's adjourn 10:12. Let's raise for the closing prayer by Honorable Buntuyan.
Let us pray. Almighty God, as we conclude this session today, we ask for your guidance and wisdom to continue to lead us in our service to the people, grant us the strength to make decisions that are just unfair, and help us to always prioritize the well-being of our community. May we always be mindful of our responsibilities and duties as public servants, and may we work together in harmony for the common good. Bless the constituents with peace, prosperity, and good health. As we adjourn to this session, we offer our gratitude to your guidance and protections, and may we divine lights continue to illuminate our path that we strive to create for better future for all. We ask this in your name, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.